Good morning, everyone. I see we have some folks who have some connectivity issues. So Ms. Ismael Heiser will be sure to give you some time to adjust that. And Ms. Mulberg, if you please, would make Dr. Presidio a presenter. I will start with roll call, then turn it over to Ms. Marin and Ms. Dernak Kofax. Alrighty, Ms. Omish.
Here.
Oh, my volume is way too loud. Thank you. Ms. Tolan.
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Good morning, everybody.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Good morning.
Mr. Frisch.
Good morning.
Ms. Cohen.
Good morning.
Ms. Ismael Heiser, is your volume now working? Not quite, we will come back to you. Ms. Bukarski.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning. Ms. Dernak Kofax? Dernak Kofax? Tammy, you also have no volume at this point. Ms. Marin.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. McLaughlin will be joining us a little bit later. Let's go back to Ms. Ismael Heiser. She has no sound still. Tammy, are you, do you have sound? Alright, Ms. Marin, I think we're starting off a little bit out of deficit. Oh, there she is. I see her picture, but no sound. Just while she works that out, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the meeting over to you, Ms. Marin, for you to get us started. Just so you know, we are, we do not have sound from Ms. Ismael Heiser, Ms. Dernak Kofax, and Ms. McLaughlin is not yet with us, but she will be joining a little bit later on. So Ms. Marin, please go ahead.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Hello. Yes, so we are here today to focus on the budget. And this is not budget development. It is understanding how our budget is developed. So it's not part of the FY22 development. It's for information to understand that process better. So, you know, this is about our operating budget. And this is the next installment of understanding more about how our program budget is developed. So if you recall, back in December, we received information from our budget team about staffing formulas and how resources are provided directly to schools through those staffing formulas. So that information will be the foundation upon which today's is then layered upon it. And specifically, that was about the standards of quality from the state. And then, so today, we're going to dive deeper into the portion that's managed by Instructional Services, the Instructional Services Department, or ISD. Just know, originally, we had had ISD and the Special Services Office, but it is quite a lot to bite off to do both of those. So we have moved back to that second portion of the Special Services to March and so forth. So, you know, the intention is to complete a look into different offices and how the budget is prepared by May, or possibly June, but just, you know, please note, the schedule is kind of flexible. So this is an informational presentation. There's no decisions to be made for today. There will be time for questions. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Presidio, who will walk us through the Instructional Service Department's fiscal '21 budget.
Alright, well, thank you, Ms. Marin. That's a great setup, and good morning, everybody. And if we could actually pull up the presentation slides, we'll go ahead and jump in this morning. And first, I just want to start by, you know, saying thank you for this opportunity to present today. We're very excited to talk about the Instructional Services Department, our kind of our core functions of each of our offices, as well, of course, is the funds that we manage to support that work. And I do want to start out by recognizing each of the directors from Instructional Services who are here today to help answer any questions and clarify anything that you might be wondering about the specific operations within the five different offices within our department. So we have with us today Karen Williams, who's our Director for our Operations and Communications Office, Maura Burke, who is our Director for Early Childhood Education, Rich Polio, who's our Director for English Language, English Language Development Services and ESOL Supports, as well as Jen Glazer, who's the Director for the Office of College Counseling and Career Readiness, and then Noel Klemenko, who is the Director for Curriculum and Instruction. And we're also joined today by Jan Bonner, who is our Finance Coordinator in the department and does really an incredible job managing the funds and can provide you with a lot of information about some detailed questions that you might have today. So we're excited that we have this opportunity, and we want to jump in and really begin the presentation, talking about kind of two things. Kind of the core services that we provide in the Instructional Services Department, and then the different funds that we manage that help us carry out those services to provide effective support to the operations in the school system. So to start out, I just wanted to share with you very briefly, you know, the mission of our department, of course, is to really, you know, drive student achievement by leading and guiding what's happening in our schools with respect to teaching and learning across the division. And that encompasses, of course, a lot of things, but, you know, that mission was really kind of expanded upon even this year, this past year during COVID-19, is we really have a lot of responsibility in the Instructional Services Department to really make sure that the division continues providing high-quality services during distance learning. And then, of course, we're spending an awful lot of time planning on the successful return to in-person learning. But in typical times, you know, the major supports that ISD provides to the division, of course, is around instructional leadership and making sure that our schools really have research-based best practices that are being implemented equitably and consistently across all of our schools, and really making sure that we're looking to close gaps with respect to access, opportunity, and achievement for all of our students. We also do a lot of work to develop high-quality teaching and learning materials and resources to support students, both in their development of core content knowledge and skills, as well as those Portrait of a Graduate and 21st Century skills. We also do a lot of work to provide professional development, to build the capacity of our staff in our schools to operate effectively and efficiently. And then, we provide a lot of centralized services in the department that are really aimed at reducing the workload for schools. And we'll talk about a number of these with respect to the budget today. So, you know, for example, handling curriculum resource adoptions, managing state and federal grants, ensuring that we're complying with state and federal regulations and policies, as well as running a wide variety of division-wide student events, whether it's screening for selection processes for particular events, or division-wide events like music, division-wide music events, like sixth-grade choral performance, fine arts competitions, and the science fair, just as a few examples. So to kind of dig into how this really breaks down with respect to our department's responsibilities and how we support the strategic operations of the division and the strategic focus of the division is really all aligned with our division's strategic plan. So, of course, we have four goals in the division's strategic plan. And Instructional Services is what's referred to as the Goal Champion Department for Student Success. So we have primary responsibility for the three desired outcomes within the student's success goal around closing achievement gaps, ensuring and expanding access to high-quality early childhood education, and then developing Portrait of a Graduate outcomes for all of our students. So we spend a lot of time focused on those strategic goals that the School Board has set for us as a school system. And there are, of course, those three desired outcomes under that student's success goal, as well as over 20 performance measures associated with that goal. And it just so happens that later this week, we'll be presenting the Goal One report to the Board on Thursday, so more information on that. But we also provide a lot of support with respect to the other three goal areas in the strategic plan. So when we talk about a caring culture, Instructional Services does a lot of work around making sure that we have a culturally responsive curriculum, as well as pedagogy in our classrooms, supporting the development of student social, emotional learning opportunities and skill development, focusing on things like executive functioning skills, as well as things like service learning, digital citizenship, and general health and wellness through our health and physical education curriculum. On the premier workforce side, with respect to that goal, again, we do a lot of work on the PD side to make sure that teachers have the knowledge and skills to work effectively in all of our schools. And we're doing very specific things to really support the development, like Teachers for Tomorrow and Trades for Tomorrow, where we're really working to grow and intensify the number of folks from our own division and from our own community that can be successful employees in really hard-to-fill positions within FCPS. And then, I don't think it's widely known, but our department provides a lot of interview support and evaluation support directly to our schools and supports our school-based administrators with that work. And then, of course, finally, on the resource stewardship goal, we do a lot with central management, which we'll talk about today, funds and resources that allow us to really be good resource stewards and manage our money in a very fiscally responsible way. So whenever we can centralize those processes, it leads to greater resource stewardship. And I won't go through every single one of these bullets, but the way that I typically think about the work of our department is through these three different categories. You know, what are the things that we provide in ISD to really ensure student learning is happening at a high level? How do we support teacher and staff efficacy and effectiveness? How do we really support reducing the workload on our schools? So those three categories, we really look at the work and prioritize the work in each of our offices across the Instructional Services Department. So, of course, on the student learning side, a lot of this work begins with the curriculum and the resources that we develop and provide for all of our schools that make sure that all of our schools do have access to a coherent curriculum across the school system. Again, as I mentioned, really working to revise our curriculum to make sure that it is culturally responsive, working to make sure all of the programs that we offer, so the Advanced Academics Program are really designed and implemented in a way that are going to be equitable and reduce any potential access and opportunity barriers. And then, of course, our department is responsible for initiating new programs. So you can think about a number of the things that are underway right now. We don't have them scale up in all of our schools, but they're in the development stage and implementation stage in many schools, like our STEAM program, our Computer Science program, Get to Green, our environmental initiative, and things, again, like Teachers for Tomorrow. Those are programs, again, that are initiated and supported through ISD. Also, support is provided for a lot of extra and co-curricular activities and student events, like I mentioned previously. But we also operate and manage all of the summer programs. So when you think about summer school, Credit Recovery Academy at the high school level, things like the Young Scholars Program during the summer that provides enrichment to historically underrepresented students in Advanced Academics, our Bridge to Kindergarten Program that provides services to families that did not have the opportunity to participate in preschool. All of those are things, again, that are centrally managed and operated by ISD. On the staff and teacher efficacy side, again, a lot of this work is around professional development to make sure that we are able to offer best practices in all of our classrooms across the division. And a lot of the way that we do that work, some of it is centrally run, but a lot of it is through the work of school-based leaders in our schools. So really collaborating and working with the Advanced Academic Resource Teachers, our elementary math resource teachers, our school-based technology specialists, our instructional coaches, working very closely with those school-based leaders to maximize the impact of professional development and get that work and support as close to the classroom practice as possible. We also do a lot to provide and develop resources that support our collaborative teams. This has long been a value in Fairfax that we do work in collaborative teams in our schools. We know that we're stronger when we work and plan together. But Instructional Services provides a lot of supports to make that work happen, so resources and protocols to support that work and teams. And then, we provide a lot of centralized assessments as well that really support schools in the instructional decision-making process of identifying students that might need additional supports and progress monitoring the supports that those students are being provided. And that, again, is all done centrally. And then, finally, which is really important, is we really try hard to amplify teacher voice. So we collaborate very closely with instructional leaders in our schools, with classroom teachers in our schools, on curriculum development projects and on any new initiatives that we have to make sure that the work that we're designing and developing really is going to meet the needs of our classroom teachers. And then, that last category around reducing workload on school staff, again, we administer a large amount of state and federal grants, over $30 million on an annual basis. And there's a lot of compliance and tracking and monitoring activities, as well as financial management that goes in with that work. We also, again, do a lot of work to centralize supports and services. So we do a lot of central purchasing and managing of materials, instructional resources and materials, as well as technology applications and materials. So the learning platforms that we use in our schools, we provide a lot of support for previously, well, I guess currently, Blackboard, FCPS 24/7. But also, right now, as we're making the move to Schoology, there's a lot of implementation support on that project that's happening, as well as support for Google Classroom. And then, we do a lot of work to facilitate and support the development and the implementation of, again, federal, state, and local policies and regulations, as well as managing a lot of the work on division-wide contracts. So three different ways to think about the supports that we provide division-wide or department-wide to support the division. And we think about these supports in the same way when we think about the work in our offices. So what I want to do now is kind of jump into, talk a little bit more about the budget and how the department budget supports all of those activities that we just described. And as you see on the slide here, in red, we have the slice of the Instructional Services Department budget. So it's $102 million, and it represents about 3% of the overall $3.1 billion FCPS operating budget. But I want to talk a little bit before about the department budget, about the other things that you see represented here, the other categories. And the largest, of course, is in green. And that is the amount of budget associated directly with our schools, largely includes our school-based positions. So all of our FTE in our schools. The second-largest category is in purple. And those are funds that are managed by the departments and support the activities and the operations in schools. And then, in blue, you see the other department budgets, and there will be similar presentations to today's from the other departments, looking at their specific budgets. And then, finally, you see the ISD budget again in red. So when we look at the ISD budget, we can break this budget down into three specific categories as well. And this $102 million breaks down, first, the largest portion of that is in green. And these are school-based funds. About 43% of our overall department budget is based on school-based funds. And I'll talk about this in a lot more detail. But basically, the school-based funds largely are staff positions in our schools or funds that are kind of what we would say are more teacher-facing funds that support teachers in the operation and implementation of our programs. Then, the second-largest category is in blue, and those are our school-based managed funds. And they represent about 38% of the total ISD budget. And these, again, are funds that are spent in our schools, and we think of these as more student-facing resources. And again, much more detail on that in just a second. And then, that, of course, leaves what's left over in red, which is about 20% of our overall department budget. And those funds operate, essentially, provide for the operations and the staffing of the central office portion of the budget, or what you might think of as, you know, the folks that work out of Willow Oaks, those staff members and the resources and supports for that work. So I want to talk about each of these categories in more detail. And first, I want to start with the largest section of the department budget, which is in green. And again, here you see that when we look at this $44.3 million and break it down in a little bit more detail, that 437 positions, or $36.9 million out of this portion of the budget, is spent directly on positions that are in our schools. So the largest category that you see there are the Fine Arts itinerant teachers, 195.4 of those positions. These are our Band and Strings teachers that are in our schools. The next-largest category is our AAP Resource teachers. So these, again, are the Advanced Academic Resource teachers that we've been talking about quite a bit this fall. And in winters, we've been looking at our external study and some of our budget requests to expand the number of AERTs. And currently, the only schools that have full-time, centrally-funded AERTs are those Title I schools. And then, you see, of course, a few program staff for Counseling, College, and Career Readiness. Those are actually folks that are supporting our Special Ed, Career, and Transition Services, seven CNI Resource teachers, and 59 ESOL teachers that are largely, again, itinerant teachers that are supporting special education and ESOL duly identified students, as well as folks that are doing entry assessment in our ESOL department. And then, 78 positions in Career and Transition Services that support our special education students. So again, the bulk of these dollars in the green school-based funds are spent on positions that are in our schools. And then, the remainder of this portion of school-based funds is about $7.5 million, and it supports logistics that are paying for things that, again, are kind of what we would refer to as teacher-facing resources in our schools. So, for example, online campus, we have an expenditure budget of $1.5 million for online campus. 97% of that $1.5 million pay the teacher salaries that teach part-time in our online campus. Similarly, when you look at our College Success Program, $0.8 million budget, most of those funds pay for our avid tutors that are in our schools. Again, I won't go through every single one of these, but largely, again, these are resources that are either staffing resources or resources that are teacher-facing resources to support the work in our schools. The next category is the blue category of school-based managed funds. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we really think about these as more of our student-facing resources. So the largest expenditure that you see here, and really, the largest expenditure that you'll see in the entire department budget is the $21.6 million for basal learning resources. And basically, basal learning resources means things that we purchase centrally and provide to all of our schools. So they include things, of course, like textbooks, digital software, learning software applications to support learning if we buy something for all of our schools in a particular content area or at a particular grade level. So it is a large number, perhaps, when you look at the $21.6 million. But of course, we have to think about those expenditures really on a per-student basis. And when we do that, we're really only looking at $114 per student. Additionally, you know, the kind of money here that you'll see fluctuates from year to year based on the learning resource needs that our schools have. So right now, for example, we're doing five different content area resource material adoptions. So Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, and World Language. That's the most that we've done at any one time since I've been in Fairfax. And in fact, many of those adoptions that we're doing now have been delayed for many years due to fiscal restraints previously. So, for example, the Language Arts adoption that we're doing at our elementary level is the first time we've done a division-wide adoption of materials in over 20 years. And it is very important when we talk about, you know, coherence of learning opportunities in all of our schools, that we provide our teachers and our students with some baseline materials and resources that students can receive, no matter what school or what classroom that they might be learning in across the system. So that's by far the largest category of expenditures. The next largest, of course, it's $6.2 million, are the IB and the AP test fees, as well as PSAT and DRA. But most of this is IB and AP. And as many board members will remember, we have a current policy right now where we're paying for students to be able to take up to six IB or six AP tests. And, you know, the reason that we pay for six tests is because that allows students to be able to earn a full IB diploma. And we picked that number and applied it to AP as well to make sure that our AP students had just as many financial supports for AP courses that they might be taking. The rest of these numbers certainly begin to decrease in size. $3.4 million for library materials and databases, $2.9 million for fine arts field trips and musical instruments. And I want to point this one out because here is where we're paying for our instruments for all. So again, students that participate in our Band and Strings program and can't afford to get their own instruments, this is how we're paying for that particular program. And then, the rest of those items, again, continue to decrease in amount over time. So the final category, then, of the ISD budget is the non-school-based funds, or what we think about as the central office funds. So out of our entire budget, about 19% are non-school-based funds, and that equals 19%. So out of our entire budget, about nineteen percent are non school based funds, and that equals nineteen and a half million dollars. And as you can see on the chart here, under the salaries column, most of that money is dedicated to paying for the salaries of the individuals that work in the Instructional Services Department that are not employed in our schools but are employed at the central office. So eighteen point five million dollars covers the salary costs of the a hundred and seventy six positions that we have in the Instructional Services Department. And of course, those hundred and seventy six positions have a large responsibility of supporting the over fourteen thousand general education teachers that we have across our school system. So in addition, the remainder of this budget, about a million dollars, is available to support logistics funding. So logistics funding is things like general operation funds to run the department. So technology for staff, copy machines, office supplies and the like. And we also use as much of this money as we can to invest in strategic projects that are aligned with the division's strategic plan, goals and priorities. And I'll talk about that in a little bit in the presentation as well. So those are the three categories of the budget, how they break up in terms of school based budgets, school based managed funds and non school based. And what I'd like to do next is to give you a look at what this looks like across each of the offices in the department. So the first office is the Office of the Assistant Superintendent. You can see expenditures of point three million dollars in two positions. That pays for salaries and benefits for myself and for the executive administrative assistant, as well as a small amount of funds for logistics and operations that support the overall department. More interestingly, we get into the other offices that have larger budgets. So the next is the Operations and Communications Office. Expenditures, as you can see, of three point three million dollars and twenty nine positions. And again, those twenty nine positions centrally support two hundred and forty five positions directly in our schools. So what does the Operations and Communications Office do? Well, this team is really largely responsible for supporting the entire department with effective resource stewardship through budget and financial management, through project management and data analysis services to make sure that the department operates to a maximum level of efficiency and effectiveness. So this is where all of our financial staff sits and works in our department. This is where our project management team operates and is staffed, as well as a few folks that we have supporting data analysis and program improvement. And then additionally, this office also runs and operates the ACE program. They are the Adult and Community Education Program. So again, looking at this office in terms of, you know, those three big buckets of student learning, teacher staff efficacy and reduced workload. On the student learning side, this team provides a lot of project management support and coaching for the initiatives of the entire department, making sure that we're operating effectively and efficiently. And provides a lot of centralized support again to our schools through things like central purchasing of materials and resources and central distribution of materials and resources. So this team actually operates a warehouse space that we have with finance, excuse me, with facilities, where we store our instruments, where we store our curriculum materials and resources as we receive them and ship them out to our schools. So there's a lot of work around that central management of materials and resources. On the teacher and staff efficacy side, again, this team really supports a lot of the large events that we do in the division. So our literacy symposium is one example of a a large system wide P D event where we have hundreds of teachers participate in an event like that during the summer. There's a lot of logistical support that goes into that. And then on the reduced workload side, again, a lot of that central acquisition and distribution is really a key service that this team provides, as well as that central management of contracts and working with our vendors, which again is a huge workload reduction piece from schools when we do that centrally, as well as grant management, as I mentioned, of over thirty million dollars across the entire department. And then how that team breaks down, you can see that most of the budget is actually spent on twenty nine non school based positions. So we, of course, have a director, our finance coordinator, Jan Bonner, who's here with us today, a couple analysts, program managers, a couple data analysts, a web development specialist, and then a few assistants supporting our operations. And a lot of this is supporting the library operations across the school system. So again, library acquisition, distribution and management of software library applications is one of the key services provided by this team. And then you'll see at the bottom, most of our logistics budget is contained and managed by this team. So as I mentioned, the overall department logistics budget is around a million dollars. And about three quarters of a million dollars of that money is managed here largely directed towards professional services and salaries and strategic projects and initiatives that we might need to support across the division. The next office is our Counseling and College and Career Readiness Office. So expenditures here total about three point nine million dollars. We have thirty four positions on this team. And again, this team supports about thirteen hundred and fifty five school based positions directly. So again, this is a team that has a lot of breadth in this office. Of course, school counseling services, academic, college and career planning are contained here. But work based learning, career and transition services for our special education students is here, as well as career and technical education across our eleven C T E program areas that you see listed here. So again, we operate a wide variety of C T E programs, all the way from, you know, health, medical sciences to trade and industrial, you know, slash home construction projects through the C T E team. Our STEM and computer science program is also in this department, as well as our college success programs like Avid and our Pathway to Baccalaureate and E I P programs. So again, I won't touch on every single bullet here, but I do want to call out a few things across these three buckets that this team is responsible for. As I mentioned, you know, the breadth is is quite wide in terms of supporting not just counseling, college and career readiness through C T E as well as career and transition services for special education students. This team also supports our academy programs and specialized programs like the Global STEM Challenges Program at Edison High School and things like our social emotional learning, on time graduation and dropout prevention programs in the school system. And then on the teacher side, again, P D is a huge component of support the team provides, as well as data training to schools, school staff and counseling teams that really help us in terms of tracking students that might be at risk for on time graduation and supporting all students with secondary readiness. And then in the reduced workload side, we have a lot of work that this team does, of course, on, you know, curriculum and content creation, but also again, maintaining a lot of those central systems. So managing things like centralized testing, P S A T testing, you know, S A T, school day testing that we just did, all of those types of things are managed and supported by this team. And then again, thinking about, you know, how to maximize learning opportunities through programs like our academy programs and supporting students at the college and career, career readiness levels through our college success programs. So this budget breaks down with about thirty four positions. Again, about three point seven million dollars of this office's budget is in positions and a very small logistics program budget of about a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Again, you can see how this breaks down in terms of those positions. The largest amount of positions really are in our specialist and program manager categories. And the reason for that, again, is the breadth of services and supports that this office manages. So again, eleven different program managers manage that breadth of counseling in C T E programs and educational specialists that work with those program managers in each of those program areas. And then on the logistics side, most of this logistics budget is funded in our hourly teacher category. And typically, hourly teacher pays for either teachers who are doing professional development sponsored by the department or participating in curriculum development projects with our department staff. The next office is our early childhood office. And the expenditures here in positions are really low. So only half a million dollars in F C P S operating dollars are spent in early childhood and it funds four positions. The amount of positions in our schools that are supported, however, is quite high, over a thousand positions supported by this team. And the reason for this, as you'll see in a minute, is we also have grant funds that provide the majority of support to our early childhood programs. But the early childhood office overall, of course, has the responsibility of ensuring that, you know, our early childhood programs like Head Start, Early Head Start, pre K programs are operating successfully and serving as many students as we can across F C P S. But sometimes folks don't know that this team also runs and manages our kindergarten program. So there's a lot of additional supports to all of our base schools, elementary schools, through kindergarten programming support. So again, a lot of breadth of program supports in collaboration with other teams through the early childhood office. And the budget, again, as it breaks down in terms of services that are provided in these three big buckets, you know, just a few things to call out. You know, one of course is administering the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Assessment Program, which is quite comprehensive with literacy, math and social emotional assessments. That's all managed and run and supported through this team. We also support the Bridge to Kindergarten Program, which again is an opportunity for students who didn't have a formal preschool experience to be able to get some support and transition before they enter kindergarten in our schools. And then this team also does a lot, not just with students, but with families. So really supporting families with the services that they need to make sure that their children are successful. So there's a lot of health and nutrition support and work that this team does, health screenings, vision screenings, nutrition services to students and families. On the teacher side, around effectiveness, again, you know, curriculum development, professional development and collaboration with other offices. So for example, collaboration with our Behavior Intervention Support Team to make sure that students have those executive functioning skills to be able to be on task and ready to learn in all of our classrooms. And then a lot of collaboration with the special ed team, looking for students who might have the need for I E P services, as well as collaboration with the county to provide wraparound services to families as well. And then reducing workload on staff, of course, are providing those resources and those materials, not just curriculum, but also the data. It really helps our schools make determinations about the types of supports that students need. So again, taking that assessment information and making it actionable and coaching our schools and how to use that to make good decisions about supporting students. We also, of course, centralize the entire registration process for pre K and early head start. And we support kindergarten registration process, which all reduces the workload on school staff. So in terms of the breakdown of the budget again, only four positions are funded at about five million dollars through the general operating fund. But you can see in red here the grant funds that we receive from our F E S A P, Head Start, Early Head Start and State V P I funds. About a million and one point eight million dollars and twenty point five positions are used and provided through the grant to provide a lot of support services to families and to schools as you see listed in red here. So, you know, that's how we fund our education specialists, our, you know, two family service specialists, our one health and nutrition specialist to support all of our students. And again, over one thousand teachers in all of our schools. All right, the next office is our E S O L office. And similar to what we saw in early childhood, there's not a lot of investment from the general operating budget, but there's more investment in grant funds. So on the F C P S operating side, we spend about one point four million dollars to fund about thirteen positions in this office. And we support in the office over eight hundred teachers, mainly E S O L teachers in our schools. So the E S O L office, again, of course, most folks, I think, know supports obviously the English language development for our students that are identified as being non native English speakers and need additional support. But we work with our general education colleagues to really develop content based language instruction so that students, as much as possible, are learning content and practicing their English language skills at the same time. And then, of course, we provide that additional direct support through English language development curriculum. This team, of course, does all of this work in grades pre K through twelve. And I think people are familiar with those services, you know, that begin really at the entry assessment level, the pre K twelve curriculum and programming. But I think sometimes folks don't know that this team also operates an adult E S O L program where, and this is run through our ACE program, where we typically have, you know, between five and six thousand adult second language learners that we're providing support and services to through this program via our ACE program. And then, of course, this team runs all of our programs that are funded through our federal Title III grant. So there's funding and support in part for our parent liaisons for early literacy programs like our HIPPI program, family literacy, and then support for community liaisons and some multilingual school based staff members as well. And then finally, I think people don't realize that this team also supports a lot of international learning experiences and exchanges. And this was quite a bit of work pre COVID. Obviously, all of that is suspended for right now. But we do a lot of international exchanges for teachers and for students. All of that is coordinated and supported centrally through this office. So again, I won't go through all of these, but a few of the highlights in terms of the three big buckets of support. You know, I do think it's important to point out that, you know, the E S O L team is providing services and support to thirty five thousand English language learners in Fairfax County. And that number is very large and makes the English language learner population one of our larger student subgroups. So a lot of support for student learning on curriculum, assessment and family engagement as well. On the teacher side, there's a ton of professional development and coaching, not just for E S O L teachers, but for general education teachers in terms of working with English language learners more effectively. And then on the reduced workload side, again, that administration of all of those programs that are funded through our Title III grant are all supports and services that are taking place for kids and families in our schools. And a huge support, of course, is that initial assessment of new students. So when new students come into the system, we do provide that centralized assessment that identifies the English language development levels and needs that students have. And we provide that information to schools in a way that helps them maximize student learning time and get started with the right instructional materials and resources to match with student learning levels really early on in the school year process. So continuing on, looking at the E S O L budget again, in terms of the funding that's provided centrally versus the funding that's provided via some of our grant funds, our Title III grant, which is represented in red. So again, from the special services side, there's only thirteen positions, a director, you know, four specialists, two at the elementary level, two at the secondary level, one elementary coordinator, one secondary coordinator and two program managers to support thirty five thousand students and eight hundred teachers. Now luckily, that's supplemented by our Title III grant. It provides some of those additional support services like family literacy, family partnership support and some additional multilingual support. But again, a lot of students and families to support with a limited number of staff available to do that. And the logistics budget here, again, similar to what we saw with early childhood, is almost nonexistent. Now, our final office is our largest office, which is our pre K through twelve curriculum and instruction team. And you see the expenditures of over ten million dollars in ninety four positions. But of course, you see in red, the school positions that are supported by this team are over eleven thousand. And the reason for that is the C and I team is supporting all of our grade levels in all of our content areas with curriculum development support, professional development and coaching and technical assistance in all, in all grade levels and all content areas. So the breadth here is really enormous. Additionally, this team provides a lot of centralized services. This team operates our advanced academic program, our online campus program, summer programs and library services. So thinking about the different categories again, you know, a lot of the So thinking about the different categories again, you know, a lot of the CNI work, of course, is focused on curriculum materials and resources that support student learning. A lot of that work, as you know, right now is really focused on making sure that we do have a curriculum that is culturally responsive that represents the, you know, individual identities that our students bring into our schools and provide students with learning opportunities that are really not just rigorous, but also relevant and meaningful to them and representative of their identities and their cultures. We're, of course, doing a lot of work in some of our existing programs, like our AAP program, to make it more culturally responsive and make sure that we're eliminating barriers to access and opportunity as well as achievement. And then this team, of course, is doing a lot of work on the instructional technology side. So all of the work that's really happening around, you know, how to utilize technology effectively during distance learning. This is the team, of course, that's supporting that work and was supporting that work pre-pandemic through our STPS ON initiative and other specialized programs. On the teacher's side, of course, a lot of professional development and coaching, as I mentioned earlier, not just pullout of professional development, but really job embedded professional development where we work with those specialists in our schools to support teachers in their collaborative teams and in their classrooms as much as possible. And then, of course, reducing workload on staff, you know, we provide comprehensive, you know, curriculum materials. We really refer to those as our planning and pacing guides that provide, you know, student-ready resources to teachers that help, you know, minimize the amount of planning time that happens in school. Because planning, of course, not only is one of the most important things that teachers do, but it's also one of the most time-consuming things. Then we're doing a lot of work, again, as I mentioned previously, to manage resources centrally in a way that reduces workload on staff. So when we select learning materials at the central level, assessments at the central level, that all minimizes the amount of workload for staff. So in terms of the breakdown of the CNI office budget, most of the budget again is spent on positions. So 94 positions again in this particular office, one director, but you see larger numbers of content coordinators and program coordinators and managers. But again, that's because of the breadth of the programs that are supported. So the largest category, of course, is those, are those education specialists. But when we think about the education specialists by grade level and by content area, we really don't have too many folks to support the teachers in our schools. So for example, we only have two elementary math specialists to support all of our elementary teachers, most of whom, of course, do teach math. So we basically have, you know, one specialist for elementary math per 1,788 teachers in core content area where we have a lot of responsibility and a lot of accountability to our students and to the state and to the federal government as well. Similarly, you know, we have three language arts, elementary language arts specialists, but that again only reduces that ratio, you know, to one specialist per 1,192 teachers. And then most of our content areas, we really end up only having like one specialist. In some places, we don't even have a full-time specialist. So for elementary social studies, for example, we have one specialist for, you know, over 3,500 teachers. And of course, this is one of the biggest areas, elementary social studies, where we've been doing cultural responsive curriculum revision work. You of course remember the work that we did last year with our fourth grade team around Colonial Day, and we're doing similar work at the sixth grade, for example, this year. So again, only one specialist really to support that work. And then a very small logistics budget for this office. All right. So to summarize, I want to put all these pieces of the puzzle back together. And again, you know, we have these three different components of the budget, the largest being those school-based funds in green. And again, those are mostly made up of staff positions in our schools, over 437 staff positions in schools, excuse me, as well as teacher-facing resources. And then the next largest category are the school-based managed funds in blue, which again, are student-facing resources, pay for things like textbooks, testing fees, and the like. And then in red is the remainder of the budget, about 20% of the overall department budget, most of which, of course, fund our staffing positions with about $1 million left over to support logistics. So when we think about that logistics budget, it's about 1%, of course, of the total ISD budget. It doesn't give us a lot of flexibility to really reallocate funds based on emerging priorities. If we think about that money on a per teacher or per student basis, it would only be $60 per teacher or $5 per student. But of course, that's before we take into consideration that we do have to fund the logistics of the department with things like, again, equipment supplies, office supplies, technology, and copy machines, for example. So a pretty limited amount of funds that you might be able to consider to be discretionary funds. Excuse me. So the budgeting process is something that I want to provide a little bit of context and background about. So how do we go about, you know, creating a budget to manage this approximate $100 million of funds every year? Well, we do use a zero-based budgeting process in our department. And you see on this slide here that there's an example of the budget sheet that we use when we build our department budget, office by office, program by program, project by project each year. And this is a zero-based budgeting process because we begin that process assuming nothing is going to be funded. And we go through this process using the criteria that you see on the budget worksheet here, again, to make those investment and budget allocation determinations. So you can see an example on that template of the type of criteria that we look at. So of course, we look at things like, is there a contractual obligation? And there's a score associated with each of these different criteria. So, you know, if there's a contractual obligation, it's something that we're probably going to have to fund, even if, you know, maybe we think that there's something that might be more important. But that's just one criteria that goes into the decision-making. We also look in a way whether or not something is a division priority, is it represented, you know, in the division strategic plan? Is it something that's come up in conversations and work with the board and the leadership team as a priority? We, of course, look at, you know, what kinds of requirements do we have at the federal, state, and local level? We look at, you know, really the impact as well that we think that the particular program or project might have on student learning. And we really look to see, you know, how would we measure impact and what evidence would we have that would help us answer the question whether or not we think that this would be something that would be impactful? We, of course, look at the number of students served to maximize funds as well as the cost of activity per participant to really figure out, you know, how we can efficiently use our funds. And then we do kind of look at that, you know, historical kind of trend analysis, has there been budget reduction in the past? And then, of course, the last criteria that we look at is, you know, the degree of risk or, you know, the cost to discontinue a program. And, you know, every program that we fund and everything that, you know, is in our budget, of course, is very important to somebody in the system. So we always take that into consideration when we make our budget allocation determinations. So what does this look like in practice? So I'm providing two examples in this particular presentation. And the first is from, again, a cultural responsive curriculum project. It's sixth grade, Rethinking U.S. History. And this is a project where we, similar to what we did with our Grade Four Colonial Day project, we're bringing together teacher leaders from across our schools, working with them through a PD process to really look at, you know, culturally responsive is what we're currently doing in our curriculum. Where do we have blind spots? Where do we have things that we see that we know need to be addressed immediately? And doing that curriculum redesign work together. So the budget that you can see here kind of has two amounts. There was an amount requested and an amount approved. So that amount requested was looked at through the budget review process that I just highlighted with that decision-making worksheet. And the amount of funds that were actually approved was a little bit over $80,000. And this process really helps us to make sure that, you know, we are making the necessary adjustments to funding requests that we receive that are going to maximize the amount of funding and going to align as much as possible with the strategic goals and initiatives of the division. And it helps us really make sure that we're maximizing our dollars in doing that alignment work on an annual basis. Another example of a project that we funded, and you'll see this one was fully funded. It's a much smaller project at only $25,000, but this is our Global Classroom project. And we do have some partners with George Mason University on this project. But this is really centered around developing students' portrait of a graduate skills, communication, collaboration, and ethical involvement. So this project, excuse me, sorry about that.
Ms. Seizmohizer, are you reading? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry about that. So this project basically pairs students in FCPS schools with students in schools in classrooms around the world. And they work together on project-based learning activities, really designed around solving some of the most pressing problems that have been identified by the United Nations and other large multinational institutions and organizations. Things like addressing clean water, things like addressing climate change and food security. So this is a great project. We wish we could fund it at a higher level. But again, due to a lot of competing interests, we have to make strategic decisions. And this is an example, of course, of just one project that we took through that budget decision-making process of zero-based budgeting and were able to fund at a small level. So as I wrap up here, I just do want to provide just a little bit of additional context when we look at the department budget here. You know, this kind of idea of going back and looking at historical trends, I think, is really important. And there's kind of two main trends that are important to consider. You know, how's the budget allocation changed over time? So on the left-hand side, you can see that, you know, in the last five years, the ISD has had budget cuts of around $5 million. And in the chart, you can see what those cuts have been like on an annual basis. The only year where we didn't have any cuts in that five-year span of time was 2016. The other years, we had reductions either to staff positions or staff positions and additional supplies and materials logistics funds. So for example, in 2015, there were 13 positions that were eliminated as well as a million dollars to support professional development through our logistics funds. The largest reduction in terms of staff positions was in 2018. There's 25 positions there. Most of that is a result of the elimination of the transitional ESOL high school program that we had as we reconfigured that program to be part of our adult high school. And there's a lot of really positive things that have come out of that, but there were budget reductions that were necessary as we did that work. And then on the right-hand side, you can see basically some of the things that, that we've signaled as department leaders to the school system as a whole, that are needs that we have been able to identify. And we include those needs in the fiscal forecast process, which I think is a really good fiscal management process that FCPS uses across the departments, where we do ask department leaders to identify, you know, what are strategic needs that you see that we need to build into our budget? Now, of course, we don't always have an opportunity to invest in those things that we've identified. But you can see some of those trends that we've had in our fiscal forecast over the last several years. You know, of course, the increase to, you know, some of our specialist positions like ARTs. That's been something that's been recommended by our Board Advisory Committee, as well as a number of board members over the last several years, as well as a need for increasing our elementary math resource teachers, our ESOL teachers and counselors. Some key programs that we've identified that we'd like to expand that have really good results, like our Avid program and our College Success program, Get to Green, and our STEP program, as well as Portrait of a Graduate programs like Global Classroom that I just mentioned. A need to expand some of the innovative programs that are currently being developed and implemented only in a few schools. So again, things like our Trades for Tomorrow and our Teachers for Tomorrow program. A lot of work that we'd like to do to expand dual enrollment and work on a dual enrollment academy, as well as smaller things like playground upgrades that really need to happen in our early childhood programs and addressing some of the structural deficit issues that we have in the ACE program that were recommended by the Audit Office and FCPS a couple of years ago as well. But we just haven't had an opportunity to address those yet. So with that, I'm going to wrap up. And, you know, basically what I'd like to just say is, is we do conclude here. You know, we have a lot of responsibilities in the Instructional Services Department to provide much-needed support to our students, to our teachers in all of our schools. You know, we try to maximize the limited funds that we have to the best of our ability to make sure that we're doing that. We, you know, do that through, of course, our zero-based budgeting process is one method that we have of trying to be good resource stewards and really maximize the amount of efficiency and effectiveness in supporting our schools. And just as I wrap up, I do want to say, I think, you know, one of the things I'm excited about this conversation is, you know, for the first time really in the nine years that I've been here, you know, I've had an opportunity to, of course, talk to the board now, but also community members that are listening and to be able to highlight some of the things that the department really does and the services that the department provides. Because, you know, those 176 individuals in the department are some of the hardest-working folks in our system and have just particularly this year gone way above and beyond to support our schools during this pandemic. And I really thank our, you know, oftentimes our folks in our central offices, you know, are kind of the unsung heroes that we don't get an opportunity to see the work that they do. But the work that they do is incredibly, incredibly important to maintaining the quality of the school system. So, you know, to everybody in the department, I just want to thank them for all their great work and all their contributions, particularly this year. And with that, I will conclude and wrap up and turn it back over to you, Ms. Merritt.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Presidio, I agree with you that this is really illuminating. Thank you for this outstanding presentation. And just want to check with my vice chair here, Mr. Anna Kofak. So she and I were going to share the work this afternoon. So are you all hooked in with volume? Ah, we can't hear you. We can't hear you, but we can see you. We can see you. So you'll have to keep trying. And in that, in her stead, I will continue to facilitate the questions and comments from our school board. So again, I agree that it's illuminating. So let's see what questions and comments our colleagues have. Ms. Omeish, I see your hand up. First, we'll do a regular three minutes of speaking that our clerk will keep time for. So thank you for that, Ms. Mulberg and Ms. Medeha. Okay, Ms. Omeish.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt, Mr. Anna Kofak, and Dr. Presidio and team for the presentation and all your hard work with an immense amount of responsibilities and little resources relative to those needs. I wanted to dig a little bit deeper into the prioritization process that you shared. I had already been anticipating questions, so I appreciate that you addressed it. But if you can dig a little bit deeper into what trends you've seen, maybe if there have been changes in that, you know, set of criteria or the scoring system and what it's looked like over time.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, you know, I, of course, just gave two examples, but again, we use that process, you know, every year across all of our offices. You know, I think one of the challenges that I would say is a trend that we've identified is, you know, the there's an increased need to do more and expand more programs and start new things without any additional resources. So, I mean, you can see we've, you know, reduced the department budget by almost $5 million, but we've expanded the amount of responsibilities and things that we want to do. And that is a huge problem and a huge tension. And what that means is that comes out in the budget process in a way that we have to, you know, make reductions. And the reductions typically happen in, you know, one or two places, right? The first place is through, you know, staffing reductions. And that's why you see, you know, the reductions on that slide that I shared over the last five years. Those staff reductions are largely the, you know, result of having to, you know, we have to make hard choices and we've had to make the decision to eliminate some positions over the last five years to be able to fund more of the emerging needs that we've had. The other trend that's been a result of, you know, this budget process in the last several years is really a disinvestment in professional development funds. Because, again, that's a, that's an area where it's a, we want, we want to offer as robust of professional development opportunities as we can. But when budgets are tight and, you know, there are competing interests, it's an area that oftentimes you know, there are competing interests, it's an area that oftentimes is reduced. So those are the two biggest areas. Of course, you know, going back to 2015, there was a $1 million reduction in professional development, which means we offered, for example, you know, fewer centralized professional development activities, but, you know, fewer things like, you know, department chair meetings and lead teacher meetings. And oftentimes, when, you know, we talk kind of at the board leadership team level about, you know, program coherence and consistency and fidelity of implementation, that work happens through our instructional leaders in our buildings. You know, it happens through our principals, it happens through our instructional coaches, through our ARTs, right, through our math and literacy, you know, lead teachers. And the fewer opportunities that we have to work with those individuals, you know, the more difficult and the more challenged, I think, that it is to have that consistency and coherence in all of our schools. So, you know, that would be one of the bigger challenges that we have, I think, that we've seen as kind of a trend.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, and digging deeper into what you just shared, I mean, relative to the number of students being served by any given program, where do you see some of the, maybe the grossest kind of imbalances, you know, given what budgetary allocation we end up with? And in your perspective, given the process that's in place, why do you think that persists?
Well, I really appreciate that question as well. And I would say, you know, probably two to three places that I would be the most concerned about personally. The first is, you know, our investments in, you know, ESOL office. Again, you know, without having the slide up on the screen, you know, most of that funding is being provided through grant funds. You know, and that's strategic and that's being good resource stewards. But again, one of the biggest areas of need that we see when we talk about serving 35,000 students, they're active English language learners. Forget about the students who might have recently become English language proficient over the last couple of years and still need support, right? Or students who come from, you know, homes where English is not spoken in the home or it's spoken on a limited basis that might need support. 35,000 active English language learners. We know that we need more staffing there, particularly, you know, at the elementary level and particularly based on, you know, the language levels of the students in our schools. I mean, we have some schools where, you know, the majority of the students are English language learners and that they're at the, you know, more new and emerging levels and need more support and resource. So that's one of the biggest areas. And then on the central office side, you know, you need more than, you know, two specialists and two coordinators to provide PD and support services, you know, that are really going to be robust and impactful. The second area that I worry a lot about, well, I'll say, let me, I'll say the second area that I would worry a lot about really is around Portrait of a Graduate and what we're doing around Portrait of a Graduate and the investments that we have there. You know, that's an area where, again, we don't have a line item budget. And we say as a school system that our ultimate goal is for students to leave here not just with content knowledge, but with skills that are going to enable them to be successful, you know, in college and careers. And we basically are having to figure out, you know, how to cobble together budgets and do things from other places to do that work. So that's an area where we definitely need a lot of additional support. And, you know, again, there's other areas that could make my top two and, you know, I definitely have a list that's longer than that, but if I'm just going to give you two, I would say, you know, those are two where we have the largest number of students that we need to serve and where with Portrait of a Graduate, we say that's our ultimate goal and ultimate responsibility. And I think we need to do more work there.
And just the second part of the question, Dr. Presidio, why that doesn't end up being resolved through our prioritization process as it is now? Or what you see to be, you know, the problem with that?
Well, you know, a lot of it, again, is just, you know, a very limited amount of funds that we have to work with, right? So, again, it's very difficult and, you know, on that decision-making criteria you should to look at, it's hard to identify something that can easily be discontinued, right? Because any program and service that we provide is something that is, you know, largely either required, you know, by state law in terms of meeting SOQs, or it's something that we've said in the school system is a priority, right? So, you know, there's not a lot in the budget that you're able to shift and move around. You know, as I mentioned, you know, when you look at the non-school-based component of the budget, we're talking about $1 million in logistics funds, right? I mean, it's a very limited amount of money that we're trying to spread and use to maximize, you know, competing interests. So it's hard, that's a big piece of it.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm acknowledging too, you know, the political nature, even just looking at the budget and process criteria you have, you know, board priorities and LT priorities are a top consideration. So that means, you know, our assessment and our understanding of what's on the ground has to be proper to be able to advise accordingly, and it seems there have been imbalances as a result. Another question kind of along these lines, but how many students do we serve through the Fine Arts budget? Do you have a, even if it's just an estimate?
I don't, I don't off the top of my head. If anybody on our team does, they'll raise their hand and they'll help us with that one. But I can get that to you as a follow-up. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything. I mean, along the lines of what we're talking about, I think something that stands out to me that's difficult not to speak to, although I know this is, you know, for affirmation purposes, with the 35,000 students for ESOL, right, we're putting 1.4 million. Early childhood, which we know is an extremely important priority, is about half million. And I know we need the funding to be able to support that, but that's impacting all students, 189,000, right? And then with fine arts, we're putting in 2.9 million. It's just something that gives me a little bit of pause and I expect that it's a small subset.
Well, on that, yeah, on that component of the budget, again, I don't have the exact number, but we're talking about our elementary, you know, band and strings program, music program. So I mean, that's all of our elementary students that participate. So, and again, that's largely, that dollar amount is largely paying for instruments for students who can't afford to get their own instruments.
No, that's, I mean, that's helpful. Just staying big picture, I mean, I'm also curious about the basal learning resources. I think I mentioned this in our first work session as a board, but in the move away from some of the traditional ways of doing these things and what resources are now available and how many teachers don't even use these things. So I'm just curious what thinking maybe has gone into that, seeing how it's a massive budget item within the office? And if there's at all, you know, any thinking about moving away or, you know, how we're planning for the future, given the dollar amount?
Yeah, so, you know, we, of course, develop a lot of our own resources in Fairfax as well, which is really important. But, you know, my position has been, and it is supported by, you know, again, best practice research, is that, you know, if you, if you want to have coherence in an educational program, you've got to have a basic set of building blocks in terms of curriculum resources that all teachers have access to and that all students have access to. And one of the biggest challenges, and I know this board talks about it a lot, in terms of fidelity of implementation, another way to say that is variation, right? Variation from school to school or classroom to classroom in terms of what students have, you know, access to. So I do think it's really important to reduce that amount of variation and to be able to control for that variation by providing, you know, core materials in every, you know, major content area to all of our schools consistently. And, you know, in the other school systems that I've worked in, that was typically something that was a major, you know, improvement strategy, making sure that everybody has the same materials and resources to work from. When I came here nine years ago, you know, and had an opportunity to visit schools for the first time, it was very apparent to me, you know, particularly when we talk about, we hadn't done elementary language arts adoption for 20 years, that there was a huge amount of variation across schools in terms of the amount of learning materials and resources that schools had. So reducing that variation, I think, is incredibly important. I do think it's supported by research. It is a large investment in a system our size, you know, when you look at the overall amount. But again, when you talk about $114 per student, you know, when we're talking about five different content areas that we're in the process of, you know, procuring, you know, resources for right now, it's really not that large of an expenditure, you know, relative to our size and to the breadth of curriculum that we're talking about. And again, it's not just textbooks, you know, it's learning software, applications, and things as well.
No, for sure. It's not so much in advocacy for elimination as much as it is thinking a little bit differently or planning, you know, long-term, given the amount it takes, but thank you.
Thank you very much, very interesting. Next, we have Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Sloan, thank you. It's always great to get a refresher on how much Instructional Services actually does. It's amazing how broad the breadth of that department is. And I think this was a great way of walking through all of the various piece parts that your department does. You know, I know you're a big fan of best practices. And so what I'm hoping you can provide some insight on, because especially in light of your presentation and the last series of questions, what percentage of a total budget should professional development take in a school system our size? Because I know that we have cut professional development year after year after year. So that's the first question. And then this, if you want to answer that, I'll go to the others.
Well, that is a great question, and I'm going to have to take that one as a go-back or a next step because I used to have that committed to memory and it's just kind of escaped my memory, to be honest with you. So I can, I can run that for you.
That would be great. I know you've talked about it in the past. Secondly, the role of band and spring and strings and how that contributes to other skills so essential for our Portrait of the Graduate, including math, science, and creativity. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, thanks. That's a great question. You know, we've been having this conversation as a school system about, you know, accelerating student learning, making sure that all students have, you know, opportunity and access to advanced learning opportunities. And a big part of that discussion has been around talent development. Well, you know, we've been having some really good discussions as a leadership team lately, thinking about equity and what does talent development mean? And, you know, a big part of that conversation is finding ways where students can connect and show their talent, grow their interests in different ways, not all in the same way, not just through math, not just through science, right, but through the art, through other opportunities and avenues as well. And we do know, and the research shows, that there's a large connection between creative thinking and, you know, system thinking and, you know, computational thinking and, you know, that you need to have in math and science as well. So sometimes this talent development work and opportunity for, you know, access to advanced, you know, coursework and rigor can really begin in different ways. It doesn't all have to begin in the same way. And those opportunities to be engaged in the arts, I do think are critical and is supported by best practice research. And frankly, I mean, it's one of, I think, the things that our community, again, really values about the FCPS, you know, holistic approach, you know, learning opportunities that, you know, don't just focus on what's required at a minimum by the state, but what do we really want to see all of our students have an opportunity to have access to and learn? So there are costs associated with that, of course. I do think it's one of the things that really stands out and makes us a first-class and world-class school system.
And it does expand to every student, so it does reach out to those ESOL students that are so important. It allows them to shine in a different area. Two last questions. One is, you said $14 a student, per student is the budget for learning text. How does that compare for best practices across the country? How much should we be spending on that? And then the last piece is, and you're not going to be surprised to hear me talk about science fairs. I see that your science fair, you have the budget for the science fair for the, across the county, the countywide one. But I think that one of our big access-to-opportunity gaps is that we have science fairs in some schools and not all at the elementary school level. And so your views on that?
Yeah, I'll have to get back with, again, kind of specific benchmarking for you. Largely, the answer to that, you know, that question about how, you know, things compare is going to be largely due to, you know, how many curriculum adoptions a school system might be doing at one time as well, right? So I can get you some additional information on that. But one of, one of the reasons our figures figure right now is we are playing catch-up on some things that, you know, we didn't invest in, you know, in previous years. So that's why that's a little bit bigger right now. You know, the science fair, absolutely, we would love to be able to, you know, do more and have a larger budget there and provide more centralized opportunities at the elementary level as well. We try to support the schools that are doing that work now, you know, but if we did have a larger budget, there would be some opportunities to centralize something and, you know, perhaps make something more required that would be similar to what we do at the secondary level.
So as a student at Fairfax County Public School, we used to have a requirement for a science fair in elementary schools, and I think that that is a key access-to-opportunity that we should be doing. One last question, since I have the time, and that is what the amount of money that we spend for enrichment. I know that we give a stipend for AAP or enrichment activities. Could you let me know the difference between what we fund at a general ed elementary school versus our centers?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm looking to see if Noel or Jan might have that offhand. I don't have that offhand. If they don't, I can get you that as a follow-up too.
Because, once again, I do believe that that is about access to opportunities.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you so much, Sloan, for all you do.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ms. Corbett Sanders. Next, Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Hi, Dr. Presidio, thanks for the informative presentation. A few questions, probably nothing you haven't heard from me before. You know, I think the biggest thing is, you know, do you feel like there's an opportunity yearly to crosswalk what we're offering programmatically with Portrait of a Graduate?
Well, I'll give you an answer. I'm not sure if I exactly fully understand the question. I mean, we definitely embed our Portrait of a Graduate work now in other content areas, and we would always want to do that. So when we're developing new curriculum, you know, we make sure that we're developing, you know, units of study, lessons, assessment activities and the like, that are going to lean more towards developing and supporting students' Portrait of a Graduate attributes. I do think that that's important, we should always do that. And I do think we need more of a focus with some dedicated funds to make sure that we're investing in doing that work more specifically. So that small project that I, you know, shared as part of this presentation at $25,000, I mean, that's only supporting, you know, less than 10 schools, doing some, you know, very innovative and, you know, I think impactful work when it comes to Portrait of a Graduate. Similarly, we have another project that I didn't list and share in the presentation, but it's all around students' presentations of learning. And that's directly in our strategic plan. You know, we mentioned in our strategic plan that we want students to do end-of-year presentations of learning. Basically, it's like culminating events to show, you know, how they've grown and developed their Portrait of a Graduate attribute. We don't have any funds associated with doing that work. So we have to go into the budget and we have to figure out, well, where are the funds going to be to provide the PD to teachers to do something that's very different perhaps than what they've done before? Where are the funds going to come from to develop, you know, the database system where we're going to collect and house, you know, these students? Because really, what we're trying to do is have, you know, electronic portfolios of student work oftentimes. You know, who's going to develop that system, their cost to do that? So there are a lot of things that we're not funding with respect to Portrait of a Graduate that we can't really get out of the existing budget now because we just don't have enough room in the budget to do that. But ultimately, you know, my advocacy would be to try to have more direct line item funding to some of those things. So it's really both. We need to embed it in the curriculum, and I think we need some additional infusion of some targeted resources.
My worry, I think, is that I just see that we, over time, have, you know, we grandfather things in and we add, add, add. And I'm very grateful for the innovation that says like, hey, look, we need to, you know, revamp this or address it. I completely agree. you know, revamp this or address it. I completely agree, but we never let go of. It feels like, you know, again, obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels like we, we just run programs sometimes that were an awesome idea 30 years ago and certainly met with educational best practices then. But, you know, we don't sometimes, I think, have the institutional fortitude to say, this is a really cool program. This was great at its inception. I know people like it, but it doesn't move us forward as a system to what we've identified or these are the skills that our kids need when they get out into the world. And so I really worry about where could those resources be repurposed? And even though it may be painful, but when we keep looking ahead and we, we see what schools have been able to do in closing their gaps with ARTs that are full time, or we, you know, have conversations about reading specialists and math specialists and not having to have principals use their, you know, discretionary budgets to trade and, and make that happen. You know, I would like to see us institutionalize the things that we know are really moving our kids forward. And, and maybe even though it will be painful, letting go of some of the stuff that isn't.
Yeah, I think, you know, at the micro level, you know, that's what I try to do. So at the micro level, you know, every year, we're going through this process of looking at, you know, are there PD activities that we don't need to do anymore? Are there materials and resources that we don't need to invest in anymore? You know, maybe we don't renew a contract because we don't need, you know, that particular service or product anymore. I would say those are things at the micro level that we look at every year. I think you're talking really more at like the macro level. Like, are there large programs that maybe have staffing attached to them that, you know, we need to look at and discuss whether or not that's something that we want to continue to do? So, you know, certainly that would be worthy of a board discussion. I don't do a lot of that macro level work, right? Because if we have a program that we're funding right now, that's typically something that we're going to continue to do at the macro level. So by that, I mean, for example, you know, I wouldn't, based on my own, you know, discretion, say, okay, we're not going to have an advanced academics program anymore. We're going to eliminate that. That would take board action to do that, right? So that's the macro level conversation that probably needs to happen. And I do think that one of the challenges from an instruction standpoint and from a school, you know, operation standpoint is, one of the strengths in Fairfax is that we do offer so many programs in terms of, you know, breadth of curriculum experiences for students in comparison to most school systems. Right? Like, we have a very robust advanced academic program, a very robust, you know, fine arts program. You know, have a limited world language program, but, you know, a lot of school systems, well, actually, many school systems have more than we do for world languages, but many don't. So we have some of these things that oftentimes, you know, when we talk about them bringing in new programs, make it challenging to figure out when in the school day is that new program going to be delivered and taught? So we've got these great programs that we offer, but then we talk about bringing in a computer science program or a STEAM program. It's hard to work that into the curriculum and work that into the school day oftentimes. You know, we do a pretty good job with that, but the more of that we do, the harder and harder it gets. So I know some board members have had some discussions about, you know, having that macro level conversation. Are there some things that maybe, you know, we have some new priorities that we need to focus on and invest in? And I think that's a good conversation for the board to have, you know. I, I think in a lot of ways, the board was getting ready to have some of that conversation as you looked at the strategic plan, right? Last, last winter, early spring, and right when you were doing that work is when COVID hit. And, you know, all of that is basically, you know, had to be delayed. So I definitely would say I can understand that question, but it's probably more of a macro level conversation than a micro level. And I try to handle the micro level on a annual basis.
Sure. I, I think I would say, you know, your, your experience there, though, definitely crucial to us to informing, you know. I think we all have a sense, especially, you know, those of us who've had kids go through the system of, you know, what, what has been helpful and not helpful, and everybody may wind up in a different place on that. So I think using some of your expertise, I have a dog that wants to come in, sorry. You know, I, I think that would be super helpful. The other thing I just want to echo is certainly what Ms. Omesh said about more of a focus on our ESOL kids. I think as a board, that needs to be a deeper dive conversation. One thing I didn't hear and I may have missed is our SLIF, you know, kids. And I think either coming up with more opportunities to expand ACE to do some of that work outside of what we would consider a normal school day or, you know, whatever your creative thinking around as we see that population grow and grow of how we support them, which is a little bit different than, is a lot different than, you know, how we've kind of handled ESOL in the past. So I'm really supportive of helping come up with creative solutions for that. And if that means advocating for budget dollars to go in that direction, count me on board.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So just real briefly as a comment, when we refer to SLIF, we're talking about students with limited or interrupted formal education that are English language learners. And that number has grown quite a bit in the last several years. So, you know, we're working to provide unique programming to those students because we still want those students on track to graduate as early as possible. And hopefully within a four-year period of time, for example, when they come into our system at the high school level. But as Ms. Cohen said, sometimes that's not going to be possible. And we need to make sure that we're extending those learning opportunities. We're trying to do that. But definitely could use more board support because that is one of our neediest populations. So we'd love to partner with you on that. So thank you for bringing it up.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I do have two housekeeping things. Wanted to see if Ms. Darnett Kofax's volume works.
Hello?
Hey, there she is. Okay.
Yay.
Okay, great, Ms. Darnett Kofax. I will go ahead and wrap up this portion. Actually, why don't I just, let me continue with housekeeping and then you and I will figure out how to divvy up here.
Okay.
Just wanted to share a time check with everyone. Just a reminder that we're scheduled to go to one. Then we'll have a lunch break, one to 1:30. Come back to continue conversation here at ISD until 2:30. That staff are also undergoing the three-minute time limit. So go ahead and call Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Karen Mara, and then Ms. Darnett Kofax. I will send you the list of where we're at up till that point. So Ms. Tolan, thank you.
Hi there. So thank you so much for the presentation today. And of course, having worked in ISD for many years, it's exciting for me to see, you know, a full explanation of all the incredible work that is done in that office. And, you know, I just really do want people to know how hardworking everyone is there and dedicated and really creative and innovative in trying to, you know, tackle issues with the, you know, solution mindset. So I commend all of you for that and appreciate the presentation today. I have a couple of questions and I'm going to rearrange my questions a little bit. I would, I did want to follow up on this SLIF comment that was just made. And just mention that, you know, we've had actually some interesting conversations just the last few days around the idea of, you know, virtual high school, short-term, long-term, you know, what could that be? And I think this is a group of students that could potentially benefit from, you know, what we've learned. You know, we, we were talking with Liz Noto from Herden High School the other day. And, and, you know, I think, you know, she's very anxious to work with, you know, everyone that's looking at this on, you know, providing creatively, you know, opportunities for these students for high school. So anyway, wanted to throw that in. Along those lines, then, I wanted to just ask you, you know, with COVID and everything that we've been dealing with, you know, you don't have a huge amount of money in here for online campus, for example, or for your summer programs. And I know very well that I sat next to the three people that run, you know, all the summer programs, you know, for several years. And that staff is really thin. And if we're really looking to, you know, up those programs, how are, how are you looking at that? Are you looking at some of those one-time funds that we talked about? Or do we really need to think about, you know, some restructuring of this budget as we move forward? And, you know, assess our, our kids academically and socio, you know, emotionally as to what, you know, kind of needs we're going to have moving forward?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. I guess I would say, you know, we kind of have the short-term, long-term conversations that we need to have. So short-term, we will be bringing, I believe, on the 27th of January, some additional information about recommendations that Dr. Brabran has on using those one-time COVID dollars. And we will be including in that budget recommendation, funding for summer programs. Information in that presentation on what we think that we would need to have a robust program this summer for elementary, middle and high. It follows a possibility of looking, using some of those one-time dollars during the academic year next year for some additional tutoring and intervention supports. But that's really short-term. You know, longer term, I do think we're going to need to have that conversation. You know, it's only probably been about four or five years since we actually offered high school summer programming without charge to students. We used to charge students to come for credit recovery, you know. So if they failed a class and needed to come and make that up, we were still charging students to do that. That was a huge challenge for us, which we were able to address, again, I think it was like four or five years ago. In the right direction. We haven't made any additional investments really in our summer programs since then. And we know that a big part of what we want to do, it's not just that remediation, but really the acceleration and the enrichment in our summer programs. So we really want to be thinking about, you know, how can we expand opportunities for enrichment programs, young scholars type programs? And we ran a small program a couple of years ago at the elementary level called Curious Minds, where students get additional support, had an opportunity to attend free of charge and do some really enriching, you know, project-based learning activities. A lot of math is done in that program as well as literacy support. So things like that, we really do need to talk about longer term, you know, next year. Because we have, we had the need for that, you know, before COVID. And we can only anticipate that, you know, we have the need for that longer term beyond one year after COVID. You know, if you think about the students that, you know, didn't participate in preschool this year, you know, we have several hundred empty slots in preschool this year. Those are students starting out without a preschool experience, going to be even farther behind. You know, still to be determined, students who didn't participate in kindergarten this year, you know, where they're going to show up and what their skills are going to look like. So, you know, and that's just two grade levels. So definitely long-term, we need to have more discussion. But we have a plan that we'll be bringing short-term, I believe, on the 27th.
Okay, great. Thanks. A lot is a little bit too. With COVID, I noticed, you know, a large amount of grant-funded positions in the presentation. And I'm wondering, you know, you know, just with some of the work I do outside, you know, I see different, you know, funders looking at things differently because of COVID-19. You know, are you, what are you seeing with the grants that we have and that we're managing? Are, you know, are you, are there concerns that you have that we may lose some of that funding? Or are the grant providers being pretty flexible as far as, you know, moving funds out to outer years? Or, you know, just what's going on there?
Well, the grants that you mentioned are state, well, federal and state grants. So, you know, we've had pretty good stability again this past year and good support for flexible use of funds. So that's been very helpful. So, you know, I would anticipate that that kind of flexibility will continue. You know, I don't have any reason to suspect otherwise. But again, those are limited amounts of dollars that we use to, you know, supplement what we're providing and investing in, you know, our operating funds. And largely, you know, what we've tried to do is target funding as much as possible through our operating funds and through our grant dollars to activity happening in the schools. But, you know, in those two particular programs that you saw, you know, we've really kind of gone to the extreme of taking as, as much as we can and investing in our schools and reserving what we can to support the division-wide operations. So, but still, the majority of funding goes to support programs and services and supplement what we're doing in our operating fund that's happening in the school.
Okay. I also wanted to get at, you know, a little bit about, I think, what Ms. Omesh was talking about too, is how we're measuring success of different programs, you know. All the different college and success programs, how do we know which ones work?
Yeah, so we collect different data points. I mean, we look at quantitative data points. So, you know, when you look at a program like Avid, for example, you know, how are students doing in terms of, you know, enrolling in more rigorous classes? How are they doing passing those classes? Some of our other programs that are aimed towards, you know, college admissions, you know, what percentage of students are actually making admissions to college? How are they doing once they're in college, you know? So we look at those quantitative data points. We also look at qualitative data points, you know, collecting information from program participants about the quality of the services and support that they get. Collecting information, you know, from staff that participate in those programs about, you know, what's working well? What suggestions do they have about things that maybe need to be improved or modified or discontinued? So it's really kind of on that continuum of, you know, qualitative and, you know, quantitative, you know, information that we collect based on the program goals that we have for each of those programs.
Great. Thank you. My time's up.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. We next have Ms. Keys Gamara.
Thank you. I'm trying to get my camera on. I'm happy to follow my colleague because I actually want to focus on page four of your presentation where you break out, I believe, the ties to the strategic plan. And I will be following up on some comments from my colleagues. I don't know if we can put that up. But when we talk about student success, one of the first things listed there is closing the achievement gap. And so to follow up on some of the things that I've stated, I, I want to begin by saying, I realize this is an informational-only presentation. And, and closing the achievement gap has long been one of our goals. But I'm wondering if perhaps to flip that statement on its head, I really look at some of our issues as having access to opportunity. And I'm wondering if perhaps we need to, need to kind of adjust our language in that way. I am concerned about the level of stigmatization. I know that that is a term of art for education. But given some of the language that we have heard in recent weeks, you know, I think sometimes the way that we label people can impact the way people are seen. So I will start there, but also with respect to getting that information, the return on investment. Dr. Presidio, how might we, the board, be able to look at that to go to some of the concerns that Ms. Laura Jane Cohen raised in terms of how we're evaluating our program? So I'm combining those two things, looking at it in terms of access to opportunity and also getting the information to truly be able to evaluate. I'll just take a breath and not dump so much on you at one time.
Well, that actually is a lot, which is, which is welcome, not a problem at all. But to unpack that a little bit, I guess I would start by saying, excuse me, you know, the, the strategic plan, student success, you know, goal has those three desired outcomes. The first is around closing gaps. We do use there, we did modify that language to not just talk about achievement, but talk about eliminating access, opportunity and achievement gaps. So really looking at, you know, where might a student not even have opportunity because their school doesn't offer a program? Eliminate those gaps. Where might they have access gaps? Well, maybe their school offers the program, but we don't see the kind of participation rates or success rates in the program that we would like to see. So we do have that, you know, concept of opportunity, access and achievement built into our language. What we haven't adjusted as much are the associated metrics that are the board-approved metrics in the plan. So I think that might be one of the areas where board members might want to see some changes. You might want to introduce some new metrics. You might want to remove. some new metrics. You might want to remove some of the existing metrics. You know, there's over 20 metrics right now in that portion of the, of the strategic plan. So that would be the first thing I would say. Then to kind of get to your...
I can pause for just one second. I, it would be great, as far as I'm concerned as one board member, to have an opportunity to see where some of those opportunity gaps might exist so that that is integrated into our policy discussions. But go on.
Yeah. So, I mean, just to give you one, and again, that's not part of the metrics in the strategic plan, so it's not part of like that report right now. But just to give you one, you know, the Young Scholars Program, that's offered in like 90 of our schools, right? So you, right off the bat, you just do the quick math and you can see where the opportunity is. Having local Level 4 programs in AAP, we've got like 100 of our elementary schools that have local Level 4 programs and about, you know, 45 still to go, for example, right? So those are just some, a couple of quick examples of some opportunity gaps. So that would be the first thing I would say. The second thing to talk about, return on investment, there's kind of two components to that. So a lot of, you know, we can calculate return on investment in instructional programs. If we have a targeted program associated with a particular outcome goal and some level of strategic budgetary investment in that program, where we don't have that, it's a little bit harder to do that. So, for example, just trying to think of a good example that I could give on this, you know, the Avid program. You know, that's a program where we have some pretty clear goals to look at students that we're trying to get in more advanced coursework and to help them to be successful. We can look at the success rates versus how much money we're in the program, calculate basically, what's the academic return on investment for that program? But in, a lot of what you'll see, when we get back to our strategic plan conversations, is a lot of those metrics are so big that we don't have really specific programs tied with closing gaps. We have a lot of different things that we're doing, try to close those particular gaps. So it makes it a little bit harder to do that return on investment calculation. You know, so for example, when we're looking at, you know, increasing reading performance, there's a lot of different supports and approaches that we're taking in our schools to support students that are struggling with literacy. So it gets, it gets a little bit more complicated when we get into some of those larger program goals and larger metrics, or broader, I guess I should say, metrics. But we can definitely do some of that work in quite a few places, I think.
And speaking of the achievement gap, how does, how does this work intersect, or to the extent that you can give me a concise answer, with the work of the school improvement? Because I know the new, you know, division there that's been set up, I know they focus a great deal on that. So how are these two things interconnected?
Yeah, so that's another great question. And that was originally why we were going to have both of the presentations for both of our department budgets on the same day, but we just didn't have enough time to do it on the same day. So the Department of School Improvement and Support will have a similar presentation, but there's a lot of collaboration and coordination across those two departments. They're, of course, both part of the, you know, overall Academics Office along with the Department of Special Services that similarly has a lot of overlap. But yeah, when you, when you have an opportunity to receive that budget presentation, a big piece of what that team will present are the school-based supports that they provide to schools based on academic achievement needs in those particular schools. So that team is on a daily basis in our neediest schools, and not just, you know, our neediest schools, they're supporting all of our schools, but really prioritizing and focusing on those schools where we see the largest gaps. Be able to see what those budget resources that they currently have to do that work look like, hear a little bit more about what that work looks like, and again, hear about what some of those challenges and gaps are.
Okay. So I'm looking forward to getting that breakdown more about where those opportunity gaps are so that we can have a larger policy discussion on that and perhaps identify metrics. Looking forward to the presentation on the intersection of those two departments. And then the second category on page four has to do with caring culture and developing pedagogy and curriculum beneath that. Looking forward also on a report on how, where we are so that the community can understand how we're, how we're working toward achieving that goal.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Next, I have Dr. Anderson.
Did he want to respond to my last comment?
Yeah, okay. Yes, please.
Yeah, just real briefly, I would say, you know, again, there's overlap across the departments, of course, particularly the ones at the Academics Office. So we're all working together on this work on a regular basis. But, you know, with respect to the culturally responsive curriculum and pedagogy, you know, we'd be happy to provide the board an update on that work. I thought we had a larger equity topic, work session that we were trying to schedule, again, with the, you know, Equity and Cultural responsiveness office with Dr. Williams under the CEO office, as well as the folks in the Instructional Services team. So hopefully, that's something that, you know, we'll be able to have an opportunity to share more about that work soon because it is really exciting work. And, you know, we have a long way to go where we need board support on this. So we'd love to be able to have that discussion with you as well.
Thank you. I really just want the community to have an opportunity. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. And I think since we are about four minutes prior to our start lunch, I will pause this meeting at this point, and we will take our lunch break. We will start with Dr. Anderson, followed by Mr. Frisch, and Ms. Seizler Heizer is in the queue as well. So thank you all, and we will see you at 1:30. Thank you.